Look at my boots. There's what I get for walking in the block.
My name is Anita Kraus of the Kootenai Boundary Pet Dog Association. I will be hosting tonight's town hall meeting. I would like to welcome you all and introduce you to the members of the Pet Dog Association. Reading you at the back is Linda Southwick of Entreat Standard Poodles and Boarding Kennels. Beside me here is Ken Smith of J&amp;K Boarding Kennels and Jack Russell, Terrier Breeder. On my other side is Karen McKay of Canine Grooming and Panda Doodle, Australian Labradoodles. At the end of this table is Jean Burnell of Over the Moon, Australian Labradoodles. Beside Jean is Penny Manzal, pet owner, and myself, Anita Kraus, boarding kennel operator. And somewhere in the crowd is Bob Martelli-Chiller, and he is a pet owner. I'd like to say that tonight's turnout is awesome, it's a bit overwhelming. Thank you all for taking the time to join us to learn more about this issue and to voice any concerns you may have. Our sincere thanks to Kokomo's Coffee House for providing coffee this evening. Tonight's objective is to provide the community with a voice in the animal control bylaws. The RDKB recently gave first, second, and third reading, but not adoption, to a set of bylaws that has upset many of us. To better represent the community's needs and wishes and to create a dog-friendly region, the Pet Dog Association has prepared an alternate bylaw proposal. The Pet Dog Association does not claim to be experts on bylaws, so we welcome positive suggestions. We need to be focused, logical, goal-oriented, and respectful of other people's rights to be heard. Our energies will be wasted if we indulge in emotional attacks, particularly against fellow community members. Ken Smith here has told me I can kick him really hard if he gets on the line. So I don't have to do that. Bless his heart. Okay. Our job here tonight is to problem solve. Karen McKay has some things to cover with you.
First of all, this is an absolutely tremendous outgoing workshop. So at the back table, I don't know if all of you were able to get to Linda at the back table, we had copies of our Pet Dog Bylaw Proposal, which thought we ran out. So there is a form back there. If you want one, put your name and your email address on it and we'll make sure that it gets emailed to you, okay? If you didn't get one. If there's a couple of people in the family and you both took one and you can share with somebody, that'd be great, too. Secondly, there should be copies of the RDKB's Animal Control 1511 Proposal. I think there's still copies there, but if not, they can be found on the RDKB website or we can also get you a link to find that, okay? And lastly, we have, for lack of a better term, a form letter that we made up in advance that may help you to get your concerns across, may just give you some ideas on the issues that might be bothering you, and it also has availability for comments if there's things that we haven't touched on that you would like to. And you can leave those with us tonight and we'll make sure that they get to either Roly-Russell or Elaine Cymore. Or you can drop them off at Kokomo's if you want to take them home and think about it some more, you know, give it a little bit more input. Or you can send it off yourself. It's totally up to you. We'll have a couple of speakers tonight. One is Richard Smith, who's our Animal Control Officer. He's going to try and clarify part of the proposal that's out there right now regarding the protocol for impounded animals. I know there's a lot of people worried about what that means. Roly-Russell was going to try desperately to be here, but he got caught in a blizzard, so he couldn't make it, so he's just emailed some points that he'd like us to put across for you. And lastly, when we're done the evening, we'll have a question and answer period. Mayor Brian Taylor is here. You can field questions to him, to any of us here at the Kootenai Boundary Pet Dog Association members. Richard Smith, if it's an animal control issue that he may be able to help you with. If we don't have the answers, we'll work really hard to get them and get them to you down the road. We don't have all the answers by any means. And now we're going to give it back to Anita and she'll prep the presentation.
Can I just ask something before we start? I was under the impression that this tomorrow, that this bylaw will be having its final read and passing.
The 22nd.
No. No, the meeting was scheduled for March 27th. I highly doubt by the turnout that it will be happening, or that the vote will be happening that night. But that's the earliest.
The 21st.
27th. Yeah.
22nd. I was told by the incoming 22nd.
Okay, we prepared a PowerPoint presentation just to let you know a little bit more about the Kootenai Boundary Pet Dog Association. Oh, we need a minute? Okay.
There you go.
All right then. Kootenai Boundary Pet Dog Association, Regional District of Kootenai Boundary Animal Welfare Presentation. You know what? I got flair.
We do, too.
Let's turn out the light.
Yeah, turn up the light. We can read it.
You can read it already?
Like, I mean...
Can everybody read it? Flair. Did we turn out the light there? There you go.
There you go.
Okay. As a group of citizens interested in the well-being of the pet dogs in the regional districts of Kootenai Boundary, we would like to propose several additions and amendments to the Animal Welfare and Control Bylaws. Address the zoning regulations which restrict small breeding programs and home-based boarding It is important to us that the people of the regional districts C, D, and E, who are providing services for pets and their owners, have a secure base to carry on their work so that pet owners have a safe place to leave their pets while in hospital, during medical and family emergencies, while on vacation. When in need of grooming, when looking for a reputable, responsible breeder, when requiring training for their pets. There are successful and well-used facilities currently in existence that we propose that these facilities be brought into accordance with any regulations, be allowed to continue their work in the community, we create a dog-friendly destination place, continue to be part of the lucrative worldwide pet industry. The regional district is looking into a bylaw that would restrict the number of dogs per household, which would put an end to small breeders and boarding facilities on which we depend. It would also prevent pet owners from having a single litter of puppies. We propose that the regional district look at its own regulations so that a considered and effective approach can be implemented. Consider our submitted bylaw proposals. Look into other area bylaws. Apply and enforce standards for breeders, boarding facilities, trainers, and groomers that would ensure dogs are properly cared for. Enable responsible breeders, boarding facilities, trainers, and groomers to operate in an authorized space while satisfying the standards adopted by the districts. We believe the number of dogs in a household does not constitute a nuisance, but rather the improper care of the dogs. One dog at large or constantly barking while tethered or loose constitutes a nuisance. Groups of dogs being properly cared for in a home or facility does not constitute a nuisance.
I have a letter here to read from one of our members, Linda Southwick. Now Linda lives in Area C, and Area C has opted out of this bylaw. We want to be really clear, they are not part of this bylaw. Hello, everyone. I just want to take a minute to explain the purpose of this town hall meeting and to thank you all for coming. It's being sponsored tonight by the Kootenai Boundary Pet Dog Association. We are a group of concerned pet owners, breed enthusiasts, and people with animal-oriented businesses in the area such as boarding, training, breeding, and breeding facilities. We started the meeting several months ago after reading the newly proposed RDKB bylaws concerning animal control and soon realized that these bylaws didn't just affect us as they were very vague when addressing issues in the community as well, such as barking dogs, abuse, and neglect. The three-dog rule was unreasonable to some and the vicious dog designations to others. In other words, one size didn't fit all, and it was obvious that many responsible dog owners and their pets would be penalized. Yes, there needs to be rules for the issues that arise in a community concerning our animals as they can't speak for themselves, and unfortunately, not everyone is conscious or considerate of other people's needs. But we felt the bylaws needed to be more specific in that numbers of dogs allowed seemed to be more important than the well-being of those animals. There were no provisions for boarding facilities and breed discrimination rather than responsible ownership being the focus. The list goes on. Our mandate from the beginning has been to address these bylaw discrepancies and work with the regional district in a non-confrontational way to make them aware of our needs as pet owners and business people. We feel that a pet-friendly community is possible if we foster the idea of responsible pet ownership and common sense and work together towards that goal. We need rules that can help us deal with problems, but they need to be fair and specific to individual issues. Our pets are important to us, and we all know this can be an emotionally charged subject. But with cooperation and input from all of us, we are hopeful that the RDKB will hear what our needs are as well as theirs. Christina Lake has opted out of the bylaw issue, but because many people from the lake bring their dogs to town to enjoy our off-leash park and trails, it's important that you are also aware of the bylaws here, what they will look like. The Kootenai Boundary Pet Dog Association has spent many hours researching bylaws of other communities around the country to see what works for them and discussing what a pet-friendly yet controlled community would look like. Each community has different needs. We seem to have city needs as well as rural needs, so we have tried our best to address both. This is not an easy task. We're going to pass on the draft of our proposal for you to look at, compare it with the one from the RDKB, and see what you think. We are open to input on this, but we are on a time constraint here. As many of you are already aware, the RDKB has passed first, second, and third readings of their new animal control bylaws. They are hoping to pass them and have them in effect as soon as they can after the regional district meeting on the 27th of this month. We need as much input as possible. So to help this process along, we've printed up some forms that you can fill out with your concerns and questions. You can either leave them with us to submit to the RDKB, or you can email them yourself. The important thing is to do it quickly, or we'll be stuck with the bylaws that we may find offensive or ineffective. Linda Southwick. Now, secondly, I'm going to read out the points that Roly-Russell would like to make himself this evening, but unfortunately wasn't able to get here. First of all, he says that given the feedback, I'll lobby for some changes to the bylaw specifics yet to be determined, given continued feedback. Secondly, we need to be careful, we need to carefully walk the line between providing the tools and support required to enact useful animal control without allowing for abuse of such rules. Three, feedback is critical to this process, and organized feedback, such as may come from this town hall meeting, is especially important since it carries the weight of a group with it. Please keep providing it. Providing specific suggestions for replacement language is useful, above and beyond identifying specific elements of the current draft that are unacceptable, which I now have plenty of feedback about. Five, I'll provide an update on the next steps in the process next week once I receive feedback from this town hall meeting. Process all the other feedback I have received and sit down with the people that are involved with voting on the issue across the district. And six, given all this, I do not expect, but cannot guarantee, of course, since it's not my decision, that we will be voting on this bylaw at the end of the month. I suspect we will take some more time to revise.
Next, I'd like to talk to you about our comment and concern sheets that were out on the back table there. Number eight, legislation for animals in distress, i.e. abuse and neglect. Any of these items that are a concern for you, please tick them off. If they're not, skip them. B, provision for kennels, all types. C, language. We found the regional district's language was hard to interpret. We'd like to see it in a language that everybody can easily understand. D, do we want a cat bylaw provision? E, vaccination provision? F, targeting specific breeds? G, excessive barking? Three, I'm sorry. H, three-dog rule? I, coat and body type. And what we mean by that is suitable to the environment. Like a chihuahua left out and it's 10 below, that dog is not suitable for that environment. And J, I'm going to pass J to our Animal Control Officer, Richard Smith. It's on the subject of euthanization.
Just so, stand up so everybody can see you and hear you.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
We can hear you.
Stage voice louder.
For anybody who doesn't like partner that we do this dog control together. My name is John. If you called our office, chances are you probably talked to me and you think it's Richard. Anyway.
Can't hear you.
I will scream as loud as I can.
If he's standing in the middle, it will help.
For some of you who are concerned, there's the wording in there about after five days. Put your hand up if you think I'm in the right area, then if you don't pick your dog up, we're going to kill them. Is this an issue for anybody?
Yeah.
Regress just a little bit. First and foremost, we are here to tell you that the last thing that I will do, and if you need a Bible, I'll get one, I'm not here to kill your dog.
Then why put it in?
Okay. First of all, we didn't put it, it's been in there for years. You've just decided to read it recently. That's like saying, why is there a two-minute on the freeway? I don't drive that fast. Something has to be put in there. So let me just back up a little bit and tell you what the process is if and when your dog goes missing. So since December, when the contract was awarded to us, so far, 100% of our dogs that we've caught have gone back to 100% of their owners. Is everybody okay with that? So no dog is going...
So how many dogs have you caught?
Sorry?
How many dogs have you caught?
So far, 11.
Since December?
Since December. Is that a lot or a little?
That's a little.
That's a little. So is it a big issue, or are you telling me it's a little issue?
Well, I'm saying it's a big issue when animals have been killed because dogs cross the river and we're told that unless we catch the dogs...
Would it be an issue if your dog got hit by a car?
It would be an issue, but my dogs aren't, it's other people's dogs that aren't contained.
Please don't tell your dogs, don't get out or they're not cars.
My dogs don't get out.
Okay. So for the people that did get out, that are killing my livestock and nothing is being done, it is an issue. Stay focused, please.
I am focused.
But you're angry.
I am very angry.
But that's not going to help the meeting or the issue.
We wanted to problem solve. You have an opportunity, Sheila, to write your comments down.
It's written.
All right. This is not about an argument. We lose out if we don't take this opportunity to express ourselves. And if I need to remind, we be respectful of everyone in here.
Oh, I'm leaving.
Okay?
So when your dog is picked up or it's lost, we give you an opportunity of five days. In our actual bylaw, it doesn't say Sundays and Saturdays, it just says from the day we pick it up. Richard and I have decided that if it's a Friday or a long weekend, our clock is going to start on the first business day. We're going to give you five days and we're going to try and find you through the vet in the town that we have a contract with, through a license, a tag, a chip, a collar, your neighbor, or just driving around.
Stop, stop. Do you know how many people use the American Vet? Do you have their information on your records?
I'm not sure I understand.
Drop locally, makes a difference.
Do you know how many people use the American Vet?
No, sorry.
There's a lot. So if you're going to be contacting vets, you also need to include the vets in other areas.
Actually, I don't have to contact anybody. I can just wait for you to come to me, but that's what the...
What if somebody went in the hospital? What if somebody got sick? What if they got into an accident?
That's why I'm saying we're trying to make every intervention to contact you. So the easiest thing would be, here it is, here it comes, it's a big one, listen carefully. The easiest thing would be, is for all of you that are so fascinated or interested about your dog, is just to hang that little tag on their collar.
What if you got...
And I promise you that we will make every effort to contact you.
What if you've got a dog whose neck is thicker than its head? Like a pug.
Okay.
They've got thick neck and...
Then you buy a body collar, body collar.
A harness would be great, yeah.
She can get out of that faster than she can get the collar.
Then I guess you need a tattoo or a chip.
There's always going to be an exception, but he's trying to do his best he can.
Exception to every rule, yeah, best he can. When the five days are up, the current bylaw states that we transport the dog to the SPCA in trails. There is no euthanization involved for us. There are two exceptions. If your dog is injured to the point that we can't save it any longer, we have a right to ask for it to be put down. The second exception is if this dog was deemed vicious. Under the current bylaw, if your dog chases livestock, chases animals, dogs, chickens, anything, other people, cats, it's considered vicious. This decision is up to me and Richard to make. Currently, we have not really met any dogs that we would put this tag on. We've met some people we'd like to put this tag on. I can't hear you.
My name's Scott. I have a curiosity about this vicious dog consideration. I did a quick reading, and it appears you consider a dog that chases deer to be vicious.
Under the current bylaw, yes.
So what are we going to do to change that? My dog was purchased specifically to keep the deer from eating my crops on my property inside my deer fence.
You put them in your property...
Inside my deer fence.
And if you have a fence...
And the deer get inside...
That dog can chase those deer.
Right, but that's not what it says.
I'm telling you now, since we're the ones that are going to come to your house...
I'm asking if you're prepared to add that language.
It's not going to get changed, it's under the livestock.
I think that the problem you're going to have with that is it's actually the wildlife act.
Wildlife act, yes.
That says that. So I don't think it's something that can really be addressed in the law.
Addressed through the RDKB.
And I see your point, it's something that needs to be...
It does.
But Scott, if it's on your property...
But I don't think you can address it where it's voted in the wildlife act.
If it's on your property and your dog is fenced in, we're not going to cross that fence to tell you that your dog's chasing a deer.
So you don't feel that you have the right enterprising property?
We do, but we're telling you as locals that live in this community, we're not going to do that.
I'm asking what the rule is, not what your practice is intended to be.
The rule is that if it's off your property and it chases deer, that dog is considered vicious, yes.
So if you see the dog chasing deer outside my property...
We consider it vicious, yes. It's still up to us to deem it vicious and unadoptable. To this day, we have not seen that dog yet. Is there another one here?
Yes, I'm concerned about the bylaws in the subdivision where you cannot have a fence around your yard.
So then you need to...
And we are overrun with deer, and we can't have...
Does this worry about your dog leaving or the deer coming in? You need to buy a...
Well, the deer sweep in our yard, we have no control.
Yeah, you're not going to think, you need to buy a...
So if that deer is in our yard and the dog chases it, and we can't have a fence, how do you stop the dog from attacking?
Buy a tenant.
No, I don't think I can.
Then you're answering your own question, I'm sorry.
No, I'm saying if you can't have a fence and keep your dog in...
Then I guess you need to talk to the people who are...
I'm going to be a rookie.
Which is not our area, right? It's not even our issue. Yes, please.
Do you have the reader of the chips? Like, do you have something if the dog can't be...
We go to Ruth, the vet in the area. She knows most of the dogs. We don't even, we just tell her over the phone, she'll, I know that dog. We've found them many times now.
So Ruth has a reader for, a chip reader for...
If she doesn't, she has access to them. She also visually takes the dog there, and she says, I have a file, here's a phone number. Quite often, she will not give us the information. It'll be Ruth who calls you, the vet in the area.
My second question is, you, do you guys have uniforms to wear? Is your car marked? Because you came to my house the other day about an incident that, and your car wasn't parked, and my driveway was parked down the road, so I couldn't read, and there was these two men, you guys, bashing on my doors, like continually not letting up, and then went to the front door, banged on my door, and I didn't know who you were, because I couldn't identify who you were, and...
Can I ask where you live?
I'd rather not say, because I've got neighbors here that...
Maybe you talk to her after?
Yeah, sure, I will.
Just, I realize you've had limited experience in animal control. What would you like the bylaw to say? Because this is the bylaw you have to enforce.
It's coming up.
What would you like it to say in regard to euthanizing?
It's coming up, in my speech if I can get there.
Can I make a suggestion for everybody? Obviously, John has some prepared words, okay? Can we save the questions to the conclusion if that wouldn't be a problem? Because we're just kind of hitting one thing after another. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. So after the five days, our current bylaw states that we're supposed to take the dog to trail. We advise them if the dog is adoptable or non-adoptable. The only time at this point that we think that a dog would be non-adoptable is if it's attacked a human or another animal, because trails' expectation is they're going to re-adopt this dog out to another family. And they don't want to do that to a dangerous dog and cause harm. Just so you know, if it does go to trail, the fee that they are going to charge you, even if it's your own dog, first of all, it's going to be neutered or spayed, mandatory. So if you have a breeding dog, it doesn't matter. And their fee is $120 a pup. Currently, our fee, if we pick up your dog and it's licensed, it's under $50. Are we okay up to this point? I know the bylaw states that we can euthanize this dog afterwards. I don't know how to reiterate this any other way, but I have no intention of killing anybody's dog. None. I have been at Elaine's throat with this, maybe to take it right out. It's already in there, and I think what's happened is, since the new legislations come in, some people have taken the time to actually read it. It's been there all along, okay? Nothing's changed. I took the liberty to go on the city website to our neighboring cities, and I want you to hear what it says about their bylaws. I've just scratched the surface, what I think is important. Going east to Castle Dar, which is the extreme to us. On their city website, their first sentence, can everybody hear me? Their first sentence says, "Did you know if your dog or puppy is picked up by the city animal control officer, we will hold it for 72 hours and then euthanize it." Period. Did everybody hear that?
Yeah.
Okay. Ours currently is five days, theirs is two and a half days. Their next paragraph is about fees. I won't go through all of them, the first... Their next paragraph is about fees. I won't go through all of them. The first one that sticks out in my mind, if you own a pit bull, a pit bull cross, a pit bull purebred or Sapphire, to register your dog in the city is a thousand dollars. Currently, ours is, if you get it before the due date, fifteen dollars. Any questions? I'm telling you this because if you feel that we're at the extreme, we are not. We're at the low-to-mid-range point as far as penalties, guidelines. We are not at the extreme. Second page on theirs, if your pit bull or your cross or strafire or whatever description they have gets picked up, you will pay twelve hundred and fifty dollars to get him back. Ours is fifty dollars. Question?
Is that in the current or the proposed?
Current.
That they want it to be five hundred?
This is the Castle Guard bylaw. No, no, I'm reading you our neighboring cities.
Okay, I'm just asking, in our current one?
On our current one, I haven't got there. I mean, this is not... Oh, the fee that I'm giving you?
It says...
Current.
No, in...
Yeah, but this is proposal.
It says if you're a stacky cross, five hundred dollars for the first pick-up, a thousand bucks for the second one. Because they are deemed vicious.
Yeah, so I'm reading you the extreme one. I'm reading you is our neighboring cities.
I'm just asking, right now?
And right now, I'm telling you the fee that's the current bylaw. It's the current bylaw.
That currently, that's a thousand dollars.
What you're looking at is the proposal. It's not in the fact. He's giving you what currently is in the fact.
I'm giving you what's currently at law, the law right now. Let's try to stay with what's current, what you guys have already approved. This is what the current law is. You did. At some time you did.
But somebody did.
Somebody did.
Yeah, my dog owner.
Their fee for pickup, so in other words, if your dog gets loose or happens to jump out of your truck or whatever, the first time is thirty-five. Second time, it's eighty. Next time, it's one thirty-five, and it's a sliding scale. Ours is fifty. It will stay at fifty. It's never changed from fifty. Currently, me and Richard, if we see that you're financially strapped, you're a little old lady who comes to pick it up on a wagon, we've just given the dog back. This is for Castle Guard. It's probably one of the most extreme. They seem to just wanna deal with it with fees. They don't wanna deal with any of the drugs. In the city of Kelowna, this'll be interesting for all you kennel lovers. Even if you have a kennel and hobby license, your dog limit is ten. Period. Anita said that you're not allowed to have a litter underneath our new bylaws. We actually have a clause in there that until it's four to six months old, it doesn't reach the licensing stage. So yes, you could have a litter of twelve Chihuahuas. What the bylaw means is by the time it gets to four to six months, you need to find homes for those dogs. Yes?
Just a clarification. I have the Kelowna bylaw here. And if you have a property greater than four hectares, you could have up to twenty dogs.
So how many of us have more than four hectares? Okay, so for non-people, how many of you? Twenty. You're allowed twenty. Okay, but for the regular household, it's ten. So in Kelowna, they will hold your dog for seventy-two hours as well, then to be destroyed. And here's one taboo. The owner gets the bill. So not only is your dog dead, but you get the euthanization bill, which is currently ninety-two dollars. Ours is, we're not gonna do it. I don't know how else to tell you, as people who live in your community, Richard and I are not prepared to kill anybody's dog.
So what happens when you don't get the next contract?
Then I guess you better keep us happy. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. I wish I could ask.
Well, no, but you're saying we won't.
We won't.
But if it's written, anybody could.
Right. I'm trying to give you this comparison.
Now let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, I guess we'll cross it. I'm just trying to reassure you in the interim, if I bump into you in a coffee shop or in a bank, that you'll feel, "Oh, I remember I spoke about, or I spoke to John," or he spoke. I don't know how else, like, we're not here to trick you. Quite often, we go to people's property and they're, all we wanna do is just talk to you and educate you, rather than, "We don't want your dog. We don't want any of your animals. We don't wanna impound them. We don't wanna give you a ticket. We just wanna talk to you and educate you." That's ninety-five percent of our goal. In the city of Kelowna, I'm just gonna quickly read it. We have none of these. For the above offenses, no dog license, dog without a tag, no kennel license, more than two dogs on your property at one time, dog in prohibited area, failure to lease your dog, keep dog in prohibited area or out of area, feces on property outside of your property. All of them are a hundred dollar ticket each. There is no limit. So if you do five of those offenses, it's five hundred dollars. We currently don't do that. We just come to your house and say, "Stop shitting on that neighbor's lawn." We do it today. We're doing it yesterday. My last one is the city of Nelson. Before issuing a license to any vicious dog, their vicious description is the same as ours. Any sort of Sapphire, Pit Bull, Terrier, the cost is a thousand dollars. For each dog that you have on your property, you need one thousand liability insurance dollars on your home. So I'll give you an example. If you have eight pit bulls, you need eight thousand dollars additional insurance liability on your home that the dogs are gonna live in. Yes, sir?
Just a question. I'm leaving out the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I'm a little confused here. We're talking about Area C's opting out. I'm hearing stuff from Kelowna, I'm hearing stuff from Nelson. Are they in a regional district?
I'm giving you something to compare apples to oranges.
My question, just for a minute, please, sir, so I guess my question is, if we're not gonna have a fair, level board here for all people within a regional district, I think that personally, the city of Grand Forks and our elected representatives should give our own darn bylaw and create it here, 'cause I'm getting tired of the regional district telling me how I'm gonna do business.
So I guess you need to phone them.
I'm going to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think part of my problem with this bylaw has to do with limiting the people in Area D to three dogs. It's bad enough that they've done that. No, I just wanna say this. It's bad enough that they've done that in Grand Forks in the city, but this new bylaw is wanting to limit everybody to...
He cannot address that, Angela, and please let him finish. We will have our question and answer period.
There is a question period at the end, right?
There is, please. Let him finish. You made some of your questions or maybe answers with what he has here, okay? So let's get on with this, please.
So after the dog is taken, then when the dog is taken to trail, we recommend if it's adoptable or currently non-adoptable. The two times that I can think that it's not, if it's attacked another person or animal, or if it's got some sort of disease and it needs to be put out of its misery. Those are the only two times that we would use the current euthanization option. It's available, it's been available for a long time. I realize that some of you maybe just read it for the first time, but it's been there all, all the time. The fee is not passed on to you, by the way. The RDKD picks it up. That's the current process if we find the dog. That's what we're doing. That's what we wanna keep doing. We're lucky that the pound is here locally, just over on Donaldson Street. So if your dog is missing, you're either gonna phone us, or better yet, just drive there. It's outside in the pound. Or you can go to our webpage on Facebook. I post the pictures, I give you a phone number to call, you call us, you pick up your dog. That's the current euthanization program, which we do not use.
What does trail do, though, when you take the dog there?
We love to finish and then we'll go to question.
The current three-dog bylaw that Angela was talking about, it's effective in the city of Grand Forks already. We wanna, I guess, migrate it to Section D. You're right, Christina Lake does not wanna be part of it. I'm not agreeing with it. I'm not an advocate for any of the bylaws. I'm the person that's gonna come to your door and say you're not following them. Why do we have a three-limit bylaw? Is that what you're asking me?
Pretty much, because, I mean, what you're doing is you're punishing the responsible dog owners.
I guess enough to answer your question.
And if I choose not to live within the city of Grand Forks, I have the option of moving out to the rural areas so that I can enjoy my dogs.
It could be, but if you live in the D area, you're going to still be under that umbrella. And I guess what's happened, somebody in head office has said, "We've had enough complaints that people say, 'I don't wanna live next to a house with my kids that have seventeen dogs next to it.'"
Again, so you're punishing all...
I'm not punishing anybody.
Not you, but the...
Reword your question. The current bylaws punish, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Then I guess you should fill out that little form that Anita gave you. Check off that thing and hope we're the best. Okay. So other than that, my main concern with the answer, the euthanization bylaw, that is currently in effect. We don't need to vote about this. It's already here. I'm gonna actually sit down and Anita finish her presentation.
Yes.
And any questions you have at the end, save them for me and we'll try to answer, maybe she'll answer them for you. Thank you.
All right, we will take question and answer period now. I'm gonna ask each person, pardon?
Oh, I was just jumping in. I'll wait till you finish.
If you have a question, okay, out of courtesy, can you let us know who you are? Are you a pet owner? Are you a breeder? Are you a kennel owner? And how many dogs or pets, okay? The reason for this is to totally ask us to take down that information to help him clarify what some of the issues are, okay? And again, we need to be respectful. Anybody got questions?
I am.
Please, your name?
I'm John McFay. I'm in Grand Forks and I am a pet owner.
Okay.
I take objection to the definition of what is a dangerous or vicious dog. You know, if it's got bull in its name, or if it's got pit in its name, or anything like that, it's automatically considered to be an aggressive, dangerous dog. How about the dog movement? Any dog, any dog can be vicious.
Yes.
The only time I've ever been bitten was a fluffy one.
You know what? And everybody here is in agreement with you. And we do not agree with targeting a breed, okay? We keep maintaining it is the management of the dog, the training of the dog. And this is a message that the regional district needs to receive.
I know people that, what we lack of.
Yes, and so do I. Some lovely kids, so I guess you get to talk to them.
Okay. Question through you, oh, Neil Krog, the dog owner, two dogs, five rescue cats, well, two rescue dogs, whatever. So through you to John, is there a problem holding them longer than five days? Like, is that, I know the bylaw says that, but has it had a bad problem? Yeah, yeah. Just, does it, is it feasible?
First of all, we have no problem. We have gone past the five days. Richard and I run the pound exclusively. We don't ask anybody's permission. We don't go, "Oh, do we need to..." We've held it for seven, eight. Over Christmas, we had one for nine because it was the holidays. And that person was a little bit shy of money, so we said, "We're just gonna hold your dog." But the minimum currently is five days.
Yeah. One last thing, and I guess it's not an antiquation or a comment. I think everybody's here tonight to find some common ground...
Yes.
To send that information back to the regional district so that the parts that we find offensive...
Yes.
Possibly get changed or changed, so then I don't know about, you know, people bitching at other people.
Well, this is our voice.
Yeah.
And we did not want to be spending our time with, "I'm angry with this neighbor because of turds," or whatever. You know, we just bogged down and the regional district is not going to be overly concerned that we're focusing there. We need to focus on, this is what they want to pass. How do we feel about it? Does it meet our needs? Do we object to this thing? Let's get that information into them.
That's what we need.
So if Area C opted out, are we not...
Can you stand up and...
Name? Angie Swift.
Sorry?
Angie Swift, dog owner.
Thank you.
In rural area. So why can't we opt out, like, Area C?
It was up to the director, and so Grace McGregor made that decision. I, she just simply doesn't want to have those rules. That's my understanding. She's not here to speak tonight.
Yeah, so why can't we do the same thing? Have to speak to your Area D director. That's who was initiated by.
Anita, the only thing they opted out of is the three-dog limit. That's always the option. They still fall underneath our district. We still patrol there. We patrol there. All the guidelines apply to...
It's just the number of dogs.
So they need to opt out of certain areas.
The five dogs, yeah.
Yes. As I understand it, the city can opt out for certain aspects as well. Is that correct, Ryan?
Right. They can opt out of portions of the bylaw and make it specific to the city. For instance, the regional district seems to have some antiquated rule that goes back to the middle of the last century about cats, but in fact, the city could have a cat bylaw within the bylaw. And so we're all in a service, so Christina Lake, Greenwood, Area D, and Grand Forks are all part of a service. It's a legal contract, so nobody's opting out of that because the money we collect pays the bill to run the service. So Area D's opting out, I think, at this point relates to the bylaw-specific items that Area D will not support.
Area D, Area C. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jim Walker, I'm a pet owner.
Thank you.
Couple of the problems I have, the big, one of the big ones is there's really no clarification on an incurable disease. I mean, there are lots of incurable diseases that do not constitute an animal being put down.
Is it Jim, sorry?
Yes, it is.
Jim, we would use a vet and they would make that decision at the time, whether you're present or not. That's how it's handled.
Okay, and another one that I have a concern with is the fact that in your, the bylaw, as you're trying to put it through, the enforcement officer can walk onto your property at any time, within reasonable hours, when an RCMP officer or an SPCA officer cannot step on it, foot on the property. Without your permission?
They can. They are alleged.
But they can.
They are constables.
They're constables and they have that right. Well, Ken cannot without a, without my permission.
Great, but that's my question.
Or a warrant.
Hang on.
They have to have micro permission or a warrant.
I'll try to answer, whether you wanna believe me or not.
Well, I've talked to Ken myself.
Well, we've been to the staff sergeant at the RCMP. We've told him, he said, "Yes, we can."
So why?
Why is already, it's already done.
It's a private property.
Right, so if you're...
What gives you the right to come and make your own decision?
It's already in place. It's already in place. Don't go backwards, go forwards with me, please, okay? The one currently in place says that we can, if there is a vicious dog or it's a licensing issue. Period. Just a minute. The new one is almost identical. Actually, some people would like it if we could go, if there's an animal in distress, not being fed. We'd like to be the eyes and ears of the SPCA. They've already asked us to do that. We said, "Well, we can stand at the fence line and watch a horse die, or we can come on the property." Some people have a voice that we would like to go on the property. But if it's a dog, man, yes, we can. We don't need your permission. Don't ask me why. It's already done.
That authority is granted to the local government.
Sir, can you speak up, please? Stand up and tell us who you are. Thank you.
The issue of bylaw officers entering the property, I believe, is established by the local...
Through the regional district.
But also by the provincial government. I think there might even be something there in the community charter. But I ran through it where, now that the, as I interpret it, you have the authority to come on the property, but you cannot enter a private dwelling or private residence.
Like, in the house?
Yeah. Yeah.
Even if we could, what was your name?
Gordon.
Gordon, I don't want to come in your house.
No.
People have invited me in for coffee and I said, I don't want to come in your house. So let's reiterate, I don't want to come in your front door. But if you have a driveway with a gate and it's locked, I still can come in.
Yeah.
Are we clear?
No, no.
If that's how it is.
The violation of our civil rights.
Then you speak to your legislation.
I will.
All the power to you.
Okay, was there any other questions?
Yes.
My name is Anna.
Okay, can we quiet down, please?
My name is Anna, I live in Appleson, Artful Road.
Yes.
I have three beds.
Yes.
And I have a beautiful kennel right near me.
Yes.
And I heard they want to close it. I'd like to know why.
They do not want to close it? What has happened, okay, is there are no laws governing, none. We are all subject to closure at any time. And we asked, when this discussion about revising the bylaws came up, that they look at setting standards that facilitated good care for the animals and we wanted to be known out there. And we wanted to be able to say, Richard, John, please, come in, inspect us. We're comfortable with what we do. If you have any issues, let's look at them. And if we need to correct them, we'll do that. We want to be licensed, we want to be part of the official business. We are under the table business. So, no, right now, nobody's trying to close us. Maybe after all the hullabaloo we've caused, that might happen. We stuck our nose out and said, we're here, right?
Well, keep going.
Well, we need your support. You need to say, yes, we want those facilities. We want them standardized. We want clean facilities. We want places where it.
Well, we have very clean facilities.
I know, but there are some that aren't, okay? So, you need to voice that to the regional district, okay? Yes, Tim? You go ahead and introduce yourself, I know everybody.
My name is Hannah, I'm a pet owner of a couple of dogs that are considered to be dangerous. So my question was to what the other fellow was saying, or somebody over here, about coming on property. You said, you don't want to go on anybody's house if they have a gated driveway, you will come in the driveway.
We need to.
My question is, if it's a gated deck area that you have to cross that barrier to get to the front door and my dogs are on there, are you going to open that gate?
Probably not.
Okay. My question was going to be, just really out of curiosity, because my dogs do hang out on the deck. If you open that gate.
They're gonna run.
No, they're not gonna run, you're probably gonna get bit.
Right.
If you open that gate then, and my mastiff bites you, am I gonna be, am I gonna be responsible for?
Technically speaking, did you guys all enjoy that laugh? That was good, wasn't it?
No, I said it.
I know.
But if you got bit, would I, would I get a fine for that on my property?
Underneath this current bylaw, if your dog bit, bit me.
On my property, if you entered the gate?
Considered vicious. And you fall underneath the bye-bye dog.
But she is protecting your property.
But, Angela, he's saying, he's not advocating.
No, I know.
He's saying, this is the law right now. He's only explaining, this is the law. Don't say it.
That's your question.
If my dog came onto my deck, knocked on my front door, if my dog hit my.
It would be no different, Angela, than the postman or Ford.
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry, Tanis, I'm sorry. Came to your property to deliver a package and your dog didn't post that.
But the postman probably would never be. So if there was a dog coming, you would avoid to open the gate and come right off my road, it's a hallway.
I would, I would have the public stand. You would have come in your property. Our first process, if everybody wants to listen, I don't want to say it again.
Excuse me, but this is Tanis. Tanis. What you're missing here is Richard cannot, or John, cannot make those changes. He's only explaining what he's.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking what he would do.
So our process would be normally, if you're not home, normally, we go to the front door, just like a visitor, and we knock on your door. I don't think we've ever gone onto anybody's property before talking to the person. Then we leave a little, nice little note. Some people have here already received it. Hi, today, you were visited today by so-and-so. This is why we've come. This is our phone number, please call us. You have twenty-four hours. We've issued that note three, four, five times. Some people have not called us back. Most people will call us that night when we're driving home. And they go, why are you here? Well, we're here because we got blah, 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 blah. And we talk to you. I think maybe twice so far, nobody was home. There was a little dog stuck underneath a shed, or a chick, box of chickens on a coop. We opened the gate and we walked in. If there's a dog on the deck that looks like it's gonna eat me underneath my own guidance, I'm not gonna go in here.
We'll put aside we were with Tanis.
I'll take you.
Personal related, what happens with your dog?
No.
Okay. Because we have to deal with what the.
No, it's not, Anita.
Okay.
The question is, dogs being considered dangerous.
Yes.
If they're on your property then.
No, no.
And I was in a situation where I was in my yard with my two dogs. Another dog ran onto the property, just to say hello, wasn't being aggressive, but got attacked by my dog. The animal control officer, at that time, a couple of years ago, came to my house and issued me a warning.
Was there offense?
No.
Whose fault is that?
I don't know, the dog wasn't on a leash, it was running behind.
I would say.
Bicycle, came onto my yard, my dog attacked it.
I would say, as a, as a general rule, that dog is supposed to be licensed. If it comes onto your property, I can't see how I would ever come to you and say, oh, it's your fault.
Well, I was issued a warning and given a.
So would you see me the next time and it happens? Here's my word to you. I wouldn't do that. I don't think Richard would do that because it doesn't seem to make common sense.
Is that in the bylaw?
I could look it up for you if you noticed, but right now, I don't know.
Okay, if there's, again, personal situations, questions about how animal control will deal with your animal in a given circumstance, please contact them. This meeting is about what do we do with the regional district? What do we want in bylaws? Yes, you're interrupting Kathy. Kathy, you're interrupting. Kathy?
That's been going both ways to interrupt me.
Okay, come on.
Okay, I'd like to ask Richard and John.
Yes.
Of the dogs that you've encountered, I realize it's a small number, how many of them are coming from multi-dog households? Is it, is it what, is it what you would consider a big issue?
Four. Answer your first question, four.
Four from multi-dog households? And are these households that are body breeders?
No, I don't see the house, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Because my, my problem is that I live at the end of the dead end road on forty-two acres. I have a fenced dog yard. I live in Area D. My neighbor's one dog walks many more miles than my six dogs.
Doesn't seem to be a question more than a comment, is that what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Anita.
In the back there?
Suzanne.
Thank you.
Pet owner. It's more of a statement than a question. It's very clear that the determination of vicious dog needs to be addressed as we look at this bylaw. Because any dog worth a grain of salt, being cornered by a strange person, has the ability to bite. To put his teeth upon someone's hand and regard it as a bite is going to be pretty much a death sentence currently. And also, into the category of being put in a situation of a convenience euthanasia, which I highly, highly resent. And I do truly hope that the determination of vicious dog is more clearly and fairly addressed in this community. Thank you.
My name is Sheri and I live in Area D. I have a couple of dogs, some horses, some cats, and a partridge in a pear tree. I was reading through your, this dog owners, Dog Association bylaws that you suggested.
Yes.
And in some cases, in quite a few cases, I find them quite a bit more onerous than even the laws that were, the bylaws that were set out by the district. Like, you talk about a dog that's deemed dangerous, that when they're, even they're on their owner's property, they have to keep the dog securely confined within a building or an enclosure capable of preventing the dog's escape and the entry of children under the age of twelve. Holy doodle, like, this is on your own property. You have to keep that dog in a building. Plus, you have outlines about.
In a building or, or in an enclosure. It doesn't have to be a building and an enclosure. It's either in a building or it's closed.
Or enclosure, but.
Or enclosure.
Oh, your own property.
Yeah, so it's in a fenced yard, so your dog, your vicious dog isn't running wild in the neighborhood.
That's not an enclosure. That's not, a fenced yard is not considered an enclosure. Enclosure is a small.
It would be like a dog.
So you need to clarify that, okay?
Enclosure means somewhere to keep it confined within your property.
You need to make sure that enclosure is not a small thing.
And that's good, we can, we can address that.
And the other thing about the vaccinations, you have, you just absolutely do not have any right to incur, force people to have vaccinations. I have a dog who's got pushings, she's quite elderly, got a serious heart condition, blah, blah, blah. There's no way on earth I can give her vaccinations right now because it'll kill her. And you're insisting that people vaccinate their dogs. That just isn't gonna happen in my household. I don't, I've talked to vets about it, they think that dogs should be vaccinated. A couple of vets that I've talked to should be vaccinated the maximum every seven years, rather than every year. And so, when you outline these kinds of things in your protocols, I find them much more onerous than even what the, I really didn't, I really found the bylaws that are by the city owners, but these are by far, in some cases, even worse. And I don't know who had input into these except for you people there, but, you know, I think that there's gotta be some kind of comfortable place here that we can't send this in as it is because I don't agree with it, but yet I can't agree with what the city is proposing as well. So what do we do in that case? I mean, you've got.
That's exactly what tonight's all about. This is our proposal, it's a guideline, and we take it from there and perfect it to what the majority would want.
And, and I think also you need to understand that this is only dogs. That whole bylaw, I have a ranch with horses, my friend has a ranch with cattle. We have cattle owners here. That bylaw constitutes all kinds of problems for people with ranches that the dogs cannot be run loose. Our dogs are herding dogs, they herd the cattle. What do we do with that kind of thing? You don't address any of that in your, in your bylaw either. So I'm not upset, I'm just sad that this is not a complete thing either to go in, so we need to make some serious changes.
And it wasn't intended, it was only as a proposal.
Yeah.
We clarified at the beginning that we want input, suggestions. And at the bottom of that comment sheet, put in the things that we haven't come up with.
Yeah.
You know, because we're just people, you know?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and it was after this, you know, we had eleven days from the time we found out that, the date that they wanted to put this through.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate the fact that it did that work.
So we, we had everything to put together in eleven days.
Right.
And we did say we're not experts.
I don't know if everybody's seen you even.
Okay. And after everything was written, a lady from out by Rock Creek phoned me and was explaining to me about, you know, the working dog. And she was very correct, you know, and that she needed far more than three dogs. And again, this is what the regional district needs to know. You can't be limited that way if, you know, your business depends on it.
Yeah, but Rock Creek's not covered underneath the bylaw.
No, it isn't, but they are looking at their bylaws too. And Greenwood, their city adoptiveness, or looking at the adoptiveness, sorry. I misspoke. Yes, sir?
My name is Brian Swift, Aaliyah Swifty.
What, Swifty?
I have dogs and cats. And my question is, where are these regional district representatives sitting at this table so they can take that stuff back?
I spoke earlier and I read what I could. He went on an early holiday.
One guy was gonna be here. How many, how many others?
He's our representative, well, he's filling in for our representative. Irene was here, I don't know if she's still here, but yeah. He's filling in for her at the moment because she's got a medical thing she's dealing with. But he got caught in a blinding snowstorm and that's why he sent me an email saying, please read this for me because I can't get back. He was in North Dakota. North Dakota, he's on a train right now and he doesn't even have access.
I just think someone took a haircut.
Let her go, let her on this.
My name is Tony Long and we have a cattle ranch up in North Fork. I'm the secretary of the Grand Forks Stock Breeds Association.
Yes.
I have some questions and I'm not sure if anybody here can answer it or if somebody can help provide the information.
Sure.
Where, where are the limits from the town to district to the livestock district? Up in North Fork, I know that we are deemed, and I wasn't able to find any maps because the Carl Wickler, who is our representative for the forestry, et cetera, is away on holidays and our president of our stock breeders association is also away right now. There's, we are considered intensive agriculture area.
Yeah.
We have permits where we chase our cattle to range and then we bring them home. So they will be at times on roads. And we're very careful to make sure we're with them, but sometimes cattle will be cattle. I just, I would like to speak to somebody, maybe with our group, with our association, add a little more length about the Livestock Act and how that overrides the municipal bylaws.
Yes, that's true.
And, I mean, I'm not expecting answers here and now, but I would like to see, I would like to see some changes made in that.
I mean, it's very obvious to me, like, from what the things we're covering here, there's a huge gap. It doesn't meet your needs, right? And yes, get your group together. You people are far more expert than this dog association, right? And what are the laws?
And it is impossible for us to keep our dogs on leash as we're riding horses down the road.
Yeah, I agree.
Can somebody meet me at the end of the meeting and we can figure out how we can get some more information? Can somebody meet me at the end of the meeting and we can figure out how we can get some more information?
The best thing to do is go to the regional district.
I was there today and they told me to come to the meeting.
Tell these guys things. We have more information than them. That's scary. No. Nigel?
Yes, a quickie. Nigel James, my name. Reading the proposed bylaw very carefully. It says the dogs, the dogs, mine was chosen by the, uh, the, um, the dogs must be under control. It doesn't say they have to be on a leash. Just under control.
No, that's the problem.
No, no. Read it carefully. It says under control, or under control, I think, if I...
Okay, I'm gonna, um, I actually wanna address everybody here.
Your name?
My name is Saul Alström. I'm a breeder of German Shepherd for twelve, thirteen years now. And I live in Greenwood and, um, I advocated, you wouldn't believe how many people I busted them about coming here. I managed to get two and I was like, "Doesn't anybody else in Greenwood, Midway came because of this?" Okay, some of the things I wanna know from in a general, so that, like, I'm listening to us and I'm listening to personal issues, not like overall animal control issues. Number one, there's gotta be over a hundred people here, up to a hundred and fifty people here. How many people here don't want to see boarding kennels that you can put your pets at when you go away or you're sick or in the hospital? Is there anybody here that does not wanna see licensed boarding kennels in boundary district? Area D or area E? Or even area C or within the rural of the city? Okay, so nobody, everybody here wants to see boarding kennels. So count how many people are here and take that to them. Another question, I noticed there were ten questions or nine questions here, but a ten's a very important question, which you brought up. Farm animals, controlled dogs, protection, herding.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
There should be a number ten here that we need to put off. Because farm animals, if I have a farm and I have sheep and I want two great pyrenees and I have seven kids and I want some big dogs out there protecting... Two weeks ago, I came home. I had a hundred and ten pound German Shepherd in the kennel. Was an eighty pound German Shepherd, which was at one end of my house. At the other end of my house, I drove up my van, pulled out seven puppies and a bitch. They're running around. I walked back from the end of there to there to my kennel. I come back around the corner and a young cougar comes flying out of my carport, right up on my porch. Now, that cougar was not intimidated by the car coming up. It was not intimidated by the bitch coming out. It didn't get intimidated until the other two dogs were out. I lived on E Holt Mountain, on, um, where did I live? It's called Ingram Mountain, Ingram Mountain at a friend's house. They have two dogs in a kennel. The coyotes on a regular basis torment the heck, large dogs, torment the heck out of those dogs. They have a hundred and ten pound German Shepherd. They do not care. They try to lure that German Shepherd all the time. I walked on that property with two mature bitches and a male. Those coyotes went, goodbye. I went away for one night, coyotes came back. I came back, coyotes went away. Coyotes can count to three, whether you're any of you on this land. Coyotes know how to count to three. And so you are never protected unless you have three dogs in your presence. I wanna know, is there anybody here that wants to see a kill shelter anywhere in boundaries?
No.
What's a kill shelter?
A kill shelter means that for any reason, when a dog is put into a shelter, it can be killed after a period of time of being there. So if a dog's put in a shelter and it has five days and then goes to another day, if that's a kill shelter, if that dog is not a dog that I've been very proud of...
What was your name? I need to address it. I'm sorry. Give me thirty seconds. You didn't listen to anything.
No, I'm sorry.
You didn't, you didn't listen to anything. In the comments, please, there is no killing of dogs.
Would you please...
You didn't listen to anything.
I understand what you're saying.
You just rang them on.
No, I'm not. I'm not talking to you personally. You have had your time.
Can you just make your point here?
So do we want to make sure that we have in our bylaw that we have no kill shelters? In boundaries?
I'm not convinced that...
I understand it's not mentioned in the bylaw. I'm asking people what do they want to see in boundaries?
I do not wanna see a dog impounded for two hundred days and not have a life and have to live in that pound as opposed to being... I pick New Hampshire every time.
So, um, there's no classification. Everybody wants to see a classification of the vicious dog that encourages a dog being looked at and studied and assessed as to whether it's vicious or not, not by category of breed or percentage of breed. Is there anybody here that disagrees with that?
Saul, we've covered that. We've covered that. Please, can we move on? Yes.
I'd wanna say, uh, Barry Noel, uh, dog owner, city of Greenwood, regional director, here to hear the conversation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It's so late again.
My question is about the, um, proposal that you put together.
Yes.
Okay, that's true. We can hear you.
My question is about the proposal.
Yes.
And I'm just curious about how everybody's voice here is going to be included into the proposal and then presented back to the regional district? Is that how you're gonna get all your information?
These films are all going to the regional district, so you put down what you want to see. What concerns you. The comment section there is for you to fill in with anything that's other than what we've put down for you.
So will that all be...
That goes right to the regional district.
Will that be, um, put back into a revised proposal?
That's the object. That's the object. That's what Rowley said.
And then you will take it back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, or you can do it yourself, Tim.
Will there be another meeting after that to see what's gonna happen? No, to see what's gonna be, what will happen once the regional district sees?
Brian may be able to answer that. Are you guys in a meeting?
Just in terms of process, uh, March twenty fifth. Just speaking to the process, the, uh, the people who pay the bills, the area D, C, Greenwood, uh, city of Grand Forks will all be meeting on the twenty-fifth of March. And I hope that we'll have in front of us at that point another draft document and we'll be talking about it, but that probably will not be the end of the process. Now, what we're going to get then is something that's a little better put together that we can bring back out to the public for input. And the other factor that I wanted to comment on is that it's really great to have people that are very sensitive and can do the job in a way that basically, um, despite the rules, they're doing, you know, a wonderful job of putting it together. I was the dog catcher for a year. Don't forget that. The mayor and the dog catcher. And what I'm saying right now is we're not gonna build the rules around these two gentlemen and the quality work they're doing. We have to build something that transcends that. And I'm just telling you right now that what you have in place right now, and I agree, has been there for fifteen or twenty years. Nobody's ever read it and we never followed those rules because we always found ways of being more humane and more sensitive to what was going on. But the time has come when we need better rules.
Why did you...
Sorry, I, I...
Excuse me, can we have one conversation, please?
Yes. Excuse me, sir?
I've got some question. Why did this go on so long?
No, why is, why is this happening now? After some things, some event that triggered the new rules, the formal rules?
I think part of it was simply timing, that this has kicked around for so long. We had new people, um, taking up the job of, of looking after that bylaw. And we obviously, when we started looking at it, clearly, we're giving these new people really bad rules to follow. So let's clean it up. So that's really what triggered it.
See, I really have a problem with more rules. And when I look at this and it tells me what size leash I have to have with my dog and trying to regulate that kind of detail just makes no sense. Hear you.
Um, one thing we haven't touched on, I think, so far, lots on our list, but I wanted to, uh, express an opinion on it and that's the, um, the barking language
Yes.
that's in there is pretty vague.
Yes.
It says excessive on our list, number seven.
Yes.
But the definition of that, I have two dogs. They're, they're in a fenced yard. Um, they bark and they'll, they'll go crazy barking when free roaming dogs come by.
Yes.
And/or somebody said it to me the other day, what, once the city rounds up all the deer and moves them away from your yard, my dog will quit barking.
Yes.
So we're working on it. But we have, um, you know, like the free running dogs and now they're to the point where they'll bark with people walking by on leash.
Yeah.
Um, some people let their dogs run the fence line.
Yeah.
Um, but we keep them in at night. When we hear them doing the excessive barking, because there's a dog running free, then we pull them in. But I don't want anybody showing up at my door saying, "Here's a fine for excessive barking" when it's caused by something out there. Something like, we have neighbors that left their dog out twenty-four hours and the middle of the night it was just barking at leaves or deer, probably.
Yeah.
Um, but that's a good neighbor consideration part. But I, I would like to see that addressed so that it doesn't just say, "Oh, my dog's barking." Well, of course they bark.
It's a very difficult one to come up with a good law. But yes, we need one because there are instances, naturally, dogs are willing to bark. And, you know, some people are more sensitive to that barking than others, so...
I have a comment on that because, you know, I...
Uh, this lady's been waiting quite a while.
Well, I also wanted to speak to the barking. I'm a dog owner. I have four dogs. And I guess the kind of problem is I have breeders through them.
Yes.
Interestingly, at the regional district, when you registered your four dogs, this member said, "Oh, you're not supposed to have that many of them."
Yeah.
Which is quite funny. I think we have to set it to night train for hours with dogs making excessive barking and barking because my dogs like to play in the yard and when they get really excited, I've got a couple of border hollys. That's some of my dogs.
Yes.
And they bark at each other when they're getting excited, when you're throwing the ball at them and playing crispy with them.
Yes.
But it doesn't belong to hours and hours at a time. Uh, I also have a puppy who has to be not to bark, but, um, so yes, it's much clearer definition of what excessive barking is.
Okay, and somebody that only has dogs and not kids.
Yes.
Kids can be just as noisy as dogs. So why isn't there a bylaw on noisy kids?
Yes. Hi. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Lenis Hagel, just a dog owner, a cat owner and a horse owner.
Okay.
I have to thank you guys. I have to thank you guys for doing a job that most people are, you know, coming down on you for because we really do need you. Um, there's a lot of, and of course, nobody in this room is in this category, irresponsible pet owners around. Um, I live in an area where there are a few and if we didn't have people like you to come over and help us with dogs chasing our horses, with dogs running loose, doing whatever. But I think we need some more wording in this. I think it needs to be extended that we need to, as caring human beings, have some wording in there about the responsibility of owners and the quality of care that all animals, horses, dogs, cats, I don't care what they are, all animals need some sort of regulations on the quality of care. And I think if that goes through, a lot of these people might smarten up and not be allowing their dogs to run through.
Yeah, just how about a show of hands then, people let support that? See, I think we're all pretty much in agreement on that one. Okay.
I just have more of a concern. Um, I also agree that regulations are important, rules are important.
Yes.
However, there's so much vague wording in the bylaw as is. That's my greatest concern.
Yeah.
And another concern is, you know, now that this meeting's happened, now that the word has gotten out, now that people have talked to their friends in Vancon or Edmonton that like to come to Grand Forks to visit, are they really gonna wanna come here with their pets? When this bylaw is in place and there's fear of their...
But isn't that what we're here to, you know, express what we want? And we do want a pet-friendly community. And the reason we end up having these rules getting bigger and more restrictive is because of owners who aren't taking responsibility. This is what keeps the, like, you all...
Can I just speak to...
A quickie, in fact, just as a bit of devil's advocate regarding noise, perhaps the city noise bylaw would account for the dogs barking in certain hours and the children making excessive noise, et cetera.
There is a city bylaw, right?
Yes.
There is a noise bylaw in town.
There, that's already in place.
Yes.
Karen, thanks.
Therefore, perhaps remove the noise, the barking, out of the, uh, this bylaw.
Hi, my name's Karen Moore. I'm a dog owner, a horse owner, a chicken owner, a duck owner, a cat owner. Zoo, uh, in area D. I just wanna speak to the lady whose concerns are about the big town people coming to the small town being worried. I was an abuse investigator for the Winnipeg Humane Society for over ten years. We have nothing on what the big cities have. Edmonton has banned pit bulls. You can't own one in Edmonton.
Actually, they've taken that.
You can't own one in Winnipeg.
In Winnipeg, you can't.
Yeah, they banned them for over fifteen years. So really, they're not banning the bull breeds, although I'm very, very, very concerned about their definition of dangerous animal here. They should not be targeting breeds. The worst breeds I've ever seen, oh, those are poodles.
Yeah. They're little poodles with no teeth, you know?
What's a leopard poodle?
Um, you know, I think we're still a friendly, animal-friendly place to be, but, but I think we do need to address the irresponsible pet owners in this area.
Okay, I'd like to wind up here and maybe time for one more question, sir?
Yes, my name's Barry Randall Senior.
Yes.
I own a house that moved here in seventy-eight. I think the problem I have here tonight is regional government is culpable or blame worthy for a lot of the grief and anger that's here tonight. For many years, we had a vicious animal control. It worked. We had bylaws that were enforced. You knew where you stood. Ten, twelve years ago, Tony Holder said to me, "Well, we're not gonna renew your kennel license any longer." And I said, "Well, hold it, Tony. I'll, I'll take legal action. I'm not walking away from a fight." He said, "No, we don't want, to bother you, but we don't want any more new kennel licenses." At that same time, animal control as we knew it went into the ditch big time. And so you didn't get any cooperation. You didn't get any support selling licenses. I mean, the whole thing just became chaos. So we've gone from that chaos and I think Ryan, uh, Mayor Taylor is correct. We do have to have some bylaws, but to suddenly come in with an officious, this is the way it's gonna be, yet this doesn't sell. I mean, I'm a bit of a hard ass and, uh, and when I see another one, you know, my hackles get up. So I think the way you're selling it as your animal control people, you don't wanna feel like me. It doesn't sell. Mayor Taylor, we gotta modify.
Okay. Again, thanks to everyone for attending the Coopney Boundary Pet Dog Association Town Hall. Thank you for the work you did. Please remember, time is critical to get those, that word to the district 'cause we don't want this passing. I would thank all of you for your comments. I'd like to thank Mayor Taylor. I'd like to thank the fellows from Animal Control. We knew this would be a real tough job.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention that the meetings that the, that the city has about this are all open. You can comment, make comments there as well.